Morning, San Miguel County. It is nine thirty on Wednesday, September twenty fourth. Calling to order a work session of the Board of County Commissioners. We have one primary item on the agenda this morning, which is an affordable housing update. Just for the public's information, we plan to adjourn at ten, that's half an hour, and then we will be shifting into the continuation of our goal-setting conversations, which is also a public meeting but not going to be broadcast. Thank you. Present in the room are two Commissioners, Commissioner Gleason and myself, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Ware is not present yet, we're hopeful that he will arrive soon. Lots of staff. We will now have a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you. Sure, I just kind of reviewed the agenda already for the public. Any comments from staff or Commissioners? We all good? Okay. We don't even have an incentive agenda today, so we will just roll right into affordable housing updates. Item six A, present, we have Dreya Ariza, our Housing Specialist, as well as Jared Biggs, Deputy County Manager. Hi Dreya.
Hi Jared.
Commissioners.
Morning.
And. Perfect. All right, this is the monthly San Miguel County Affordable Housing Update. Today's agenda will include updates on our housing projects for Ilian's decreed pathfinder, as well as the housing needs assessment and our local planning and capacity grant deliverables. So now let's take a look at some recent accomplishments since the last date. I included images from our schematic design packets. So on the screen on your left is a rendering of the complete project. We'd like to know that that is subject to change. And on the right is the design elevations. So that's scaled two-dimensional drawings that is vertical facing of the building. So these reveal architectural features such as the doors, windows, to give you a better idea of what that would look like. So just some updates and next steps on this project. On September eighteenth, we met with the project team, K E O Studio Works, Buckhorn Engineering, Gulf. Jared and I were at that meeting. We discussed the schematic design priorities, which included the cost, earthwork, debris prevention, building system options, and then some changes, upcoming changes to the sustainability code. Our next items include K E O Studio Works providing a cost estimate by the end of the month. And then we'll reconvene, I believe it's October second, for our next project meeting. Buckhorn Engineering and Gulf also have some estimates to work on as far as debris flow, fence cost, and then coordinating the retaining wall to provide options there for slab-on-slab versus crawl space. And then we, the county, will review that and report back to them. We're also in, we've been in communication with Lance Erskine, who's the property owner above this parcel. And we are looking to coordinate with him just to have that discussion based off the reports from Buckhorn Engineering to discuss the drainage flow and get his thoughts there. Due to some scheduling, it's just been challenging to pin him down to have a conversation. But that is in the works. Before moving on, is there any questions?
Can you remind me why it went, the plan went from six to five units? Didn't it?
Yeah. I would say I don't recall it ever being six. We were trying to make, because we are limited based on the P U D, to twenty-five hundred square foot total. So we had, we may have thrown out like, well, approximately six. But after looking, you know, getting pretty much an efficiency apartment at less than five hundred square feet is just kind of infeasible.
Absolutely.
So.
That makes perfect sense. I was chatting with the Sheriff on Monday, and he mentioned that he's had a lot of new hires, including folks from distant places like Hinsdale County, Mesa County, I think one or, you know, they're moving closer, some of them, but not all of them. And I said to him, wow, I guess that on-call housing will come in handy. He said, absolutely. So this is great.
And I'm curious if you've had, like, any kind of work sessions with the sheriff to conceptualize what space would be most ideal for on-call workers? Because I know we had a discussion about whether more of like, you know, studio versus a larger size apartment would make sense. And we kind of just touched on that a couple of meetings ago. Right? And I just, since we're kind of at this phase, I think it would make sense to bring representatives from the sheriff's office, Sheriff Cobal, and others who have long tenure there to kind of like help guide this process based on knowing that they probably know the need more than anybody.
And maybe some of the folks who've been using the V C A apartment too, to, they could give us some guidance on whether that layout is working. Because I think the V C A apartment is like a single living room, kitchen, and three bedrooms.
Right.
And we're proposing something different.
Right.
But, and did we, did we, that's a really good point, Gleason, did that, was that driven by the desire of the people using the apartment, or was it just our assumptions?
It was largely due to the ambiguity of our lack of security in keeping those apartments and the fact that we have multiple unrelated people sharing these same apartments.
I don't, I don't get why we're doing this, I know that, but how did, why did we choose to do those studios, I guess, the efficiencies? Which, I mean, it completely makes sense for me.
Yeah, because of feedback I received from C C S, who was housing these folks up there, that they did not want to be commingling and sharing bathrooms and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I think ultimately, we're open to ideas. We, you know, we have had a couple of conversations and one of the challenges is we are simply limited to that, you know, to the twenty-five hundred square feet. Because we had conversations and, you know, great ideas get thrown out, right? Of, oh, well, how about a big training room? And it's like, you know, are you willing to cut a unit to have a five hundred square foot training room, which is not going to be as big as you really want? A couple of things like that, so.
You have had conversations.
We've, we've had some conversations. I wouldn't say they've been kind of focused to, hey, what do we really want? And we've, we've wanted to kind of, we've been anxiously awaiting these cost estimates to really see what we're looking at to get this done. I think I may have mentioned at another meeting, you know, the earthwork is pretty expensive on, you know, on its face because we know we're trying to build on hillsides, right? And as Dreya mentioned, she's, you know, she's gone down and tried to have a couple of meetings with Lance Erskine. And, you know, I know he's a super busy guy. But a lot of our questions about debris flow management, you know, kind of hinge on what he's going to do with his own debris flow problems. Because we are kind of, if you look at the way this parcel lays out with Lance's parcel, it's kind of hugged by that parcel. And so whatever he does with his debris flow could fully mitigate a lot of our challenges or could exacerbate some of our challenges. So we want to make sure we have good coordination on that. And that's, you know, that, the debris flow management, the rockfall management, those are the things we were waiting for to get a good design. And we're to a place now where we've got kind of this schematic development and we want to show it to them and say, is this going to fit with your long-term plans as well? And I appreciate the suggestion that we just double down with the sheriff's staff and say, you know, do you all agree with this in our limited footprint that we're allowed?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Are you saying trouble reaching Lance and would it be helpful if one of the Commissioners gave him a nudge?
No, we're in communication with him.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's just been kind of missed meetings, you know.
Thank you. Should I just kind of review the agenda already for the public? Any comments from staff or commissioners? We all good? Okay. Uh, we don't even have an incentive agenda today, so we will just roll right into portable housing updates, item six A. Present, we have Dreya Ariza, our housing specialist, as well as Jared Biggs, deputy county manager. Hi Dreya.
Hi Jared.
Commissioners.
Morning.
All right, this is the monthly San Miguel County Portable Housing Update. Today's agenda will include updates on our housing projects for Illiam's Deep Creek Pathfinder, as well as the Housing Needs Assessment and our local planning and capacity grant deliverables. So now let's take a look at some recent accomplishments since the last date. I included images from our schematic design packets. So on the screen on your left is a rendering of the complete project. We'd like to know that that is subject to change. And on the right is a, uh, the design elevations. So that's a scaled two dimensional drawings. Uh, that is vertical facing of the building. So these reveal architectural features such as the doors, windows, to give you a better idea of what that would look like. So just some updates and next steps on this project. On September eighteenth, we met with the project team, KDO Studio Works, Buckhorn Engineering, Gulf. Jared and I were at that meeting. We discussed the schematic design priorities, which included the cost, earthwork, debris fragmentation, building system options, and then some changes, upcoming changes to the sustainability code. Our next items include, um, KDO Studio Works providing a cost estimate by the end of the month. And then we'll reconvene, I believe it's October second, for our next project meeting. Buckhorn Engineering and Gulf also have some estimates to work on as far as debris flow, fence cost, and then coordinating the retaining wall um, to provide options there for slab-on-slab versus crawl space. And then we, the county, will review that and report back to them. Uh, we're also in, uh, we've been in communication with Lance Erskine, who's the property owner above this parcel. And we are looking to coordinate with him just to have that discussion based off the reports from Buckhorn Engineering to discuss, uh, the drainage flow and, um, get his thoughts there. Uh, due to some scheduling, it's just been challenging to pin him down to have a conversation, but that is in the works. Before moving on, is there any questions?
Um, can you remind me why it went, the, the plan went from six to five units? Uh, didn't it? Yeah.
It, uh, I, I would say I don't recall it ever being six. Um, we, we were trying to make, because we are limited based on the, uh, PUD to twenty-five hundred square foot total. So we had, we may have thrown out like, well, approximately six, but after looking, you know, getting pretty much a efficiency apartment at, uh, less than five hundred square feet is just kind of infeasible.
Absolutely. So that makes perfect sense. Um, I was chatting with the sheriff on Monday, and he mentioned that he's had a lot of new hires, um, including folks from distant places like Hinsdale County, Mesa County, I think one or, you know, they're moving closer, some of them, but not all of them. And I said to him, wow, I guess that on-call housing will come in handy. And he said, absolutely. So, um, this is great.
And I'm curious if you've had like any kind of work sessions with the sheriff to conceptualize what space would be most ideal for on-call workers? Because I know we had a discussion about whether more of like, um, you know, studio versus a larger size apartment would make sense. And we kind of just touched on that a couple of meetings ago. Right? And I, I just, since we're kind of at this phase, I think it would make sense to bring representatives from the sheriff's office, Sheriff Cobal, and others who have long tenure there to kind of like help guide this process based on knowing that they probably know the need more than anybody. Um.
And maybe some of the folks who've been using the VCA apartment too, to, they could give us some guidance on whether that layout is working. Because I think the VCA apartment is like a single living room, kitchen, and three bedrooms.
Right.
And we're proposing something different.
Right.
Um, but, and did we, did we, that's a really good point, Lee, did that, was that driven by the desire of the people using the apartment, or was it just our assumptions?
It, it was largely due to the, um, ambiguity of our, our, um, lack of security in keeping those apartments and the fact that, um, we have multiple unrelated people sharing these same apartments.
I don't, I don't get why we're doing this. I know that, but how did it, why, why did we choose to do this, those studios, I guess, the efficiencies? Which, I mean, it completely makes sense for me, but.
Because of feedback I received from CCS, who was housing these folks up there, that they did not want to be co-mingling and sharing bathrooms and stuff like that. Yeah.
And, and I think ultimately, we're, we're open to ideas. We, you know, we have had a couple of conversations and and one of the challenges is we, we are simply limited to that, you know, to the twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, because we had conversations and, you know, great ideas get thrown out, right? Of, oh, well, how about a big training room? And it's like, you know, are you willing to cut a unit to have a five hundred square foot training room, which is not going to be as big as you really want? A couple of things like that. So.
You have had conversations.
We've, we've had some conversations. I, I wouldn't say they've been kind of focused to hey, what do we really want? And we've, we've wanted to kind of, we've been anxiously awaiting these cost estimates to really see what we're looking at to get this done. I, I think I may have mentioned at another meeting, you know, the earthwork is pretty expensive on, you know, on its face, because we know we're trying to build on hillsides, right? And, um, as Dreya mentioned, she's, you know, she's gone down and tried to have a couple of meetings with Lance Erskine. Um, and, you know, I know he's a super busy guy. Um, but a lot of our questions about debris flow management, you know, kind of hinge on what he's going to do with his own debris flow problems. Um, because, uh, we are kind of, if you look at the, the way this parcel lays out with, uh, Lance's parcel, it's kind of hugged by that parcel. And so whatever he does with his debris flow could fully mitigate a lot of our challenges or could exacerbate some of our challenges. So we want to make sure we have good coordination on that. And that's, you know, that, the debris flow management, the rockfall management, those are the things we were waiting for to get a good design and we're to a place now where we've got kind of this schematic development and we want to show it to them and say, is this going to fit with your long-term plans as well? And I, I appreciate the suggestion that we just double down with the sheriff's staff and say, you know, do you all agree with this, um, in our limited footprint that we're allowed?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, are you saying trouble reaching Lance? And would it be helpful if one of the commissioners gave him a nudge? No, we're in communication with him.
It's, it's just been kind of missed meetings, you know, um, he has some emergency happen up with landscaping job he's doing somewhere and, you know, we, we've just ships in the night kind of problem. Not that we aren't talking.
And I think, given the changing request from the sheriff's office, when we started this, it was under the previous sheriff and the, the need was to have a definite secure place for those boats should Mountain Village do away with our units, which has been brought up by Mountain Village several times over the last six years of, hey, we might not have these available for you in the future. Um, I think the most recent ones, to your point, are asking for a short-term solution, such as a landing pad for somebody to actually live out of, not just be on-call. So I think that conversation about which, um, if we want to reconfigure units and have some that are longer term for sheriff's office employees is a warranted conversation.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important and I guess I like the concept of reaching out to several personnel at sheriffs who have been there for a long time and have seen the influx of staff through the years and what that looks like and what they anticipate that looking like moving forward. So we're not going to be able to, it's not going to be perfect. And as we know, it's just an evolving need for housing and what that looks like. But I think if we could get as close to what the sheriff and his key staff feel would really serve their best purposes, it, it makes sense to just like really get that feedback from them.
Appreciate your comments.
I like the look of it. That's the direction we're headed, right? Yeah, I like it.
Great. Moving on to Deep Creek and Pathfinder.
That's where that.
So progress continues on both of these projects. Well, timelines still remain under development. Feasibility studies and partnership discussions are advancing. So for our Deep Creek project, we had a, uh, or I had a phone call with David Fox from CDOT on Monday regarding the status of our draft agreement. And he apologized for the delays and mentioned that he has one more review to complete before sending that out to the county for signatures. And he anticipates that we should receive that within the next week. So that was, that was really good news. Um, and he was very apologetic and I understand he is now moving a lot of moving parts on his end as we all are. So, um, looking forward to that when that comes our way. As for Pathfinder, recent updates with this, um, September eleventh, the county and San Bernardo HOA finalized and has executed the MOU for the water capacity and the development feasibility study. Jared and I met with Wright Water Engineers on September nineteenth to address some MOU questions regarding potential changes to our March thirty-first, uh, proposal that they had provided to the county. So we just reviewed the MOU with them, um, around the testing, testing phases, um, and then also considering the time of year and if we're going to be able to do any testing this year. And so they did send us updated proposal and that's on our priority list to review and get back to them this week. So we're making, making progress.
Is there a sense that they might be able to drill a test well this fall?
Um, in our discussions with, um, both Jonah Howe and Pete Foster with WWE, they, they are reaching out to drillers, um, to see what their schedules look like. Um, they've got two or three companies in mind that do work kind of Southwest Colorado. And so we will know a little bit better. Um, if that's going to be feasible, uh, I think in the next week or two, so.
And is there any, like, push urgency? Like, I mean, that would be a huge benefit to get that in this fall. Is that, are you guys operating under that? That mindset?
Yes, we've, I mean, we've expressed to Jonah that we want this done this fall, if at all possible. And, you know, it, it's one of these things we have to get a driller coordinated. Um, and we also have to make sure, and this is one of the hesitancies of the San Bernardo, you know, kind of HOA. They want to be informed, they want to pick or have the menu of options of where to drill this thing. So we're, we're trying to work around that uh, as best as possible with the direction to Jonah to, you know, move this as, as expediently as possible, because, um, it, it is one of those things where I, I'm very interested because we did have a lower water year to see if those wells will, you know, are still holding and doing, uh, performing really well with, um, our current water year where if we have a big winter and do it next spring, you know, we, we might get a little bit of a different result, but.
Good point. Yeah.
Great. Any more questions for another? No? Great. It's great news, though.
Yeah.
Great. So moving on to our housing needs assessment and our local planning capacity grant. Our housing needs assessment report. Um, the SMR HA is currently compiling that feedback for inclusion in the report and they are working through DOLA to submit that. And it's going to be done through a survey process. Um, and to reach out to Jared and I had a couple of questions, um, as far as the appropriate information from the report to include in one of the sections within the survey. So just need to follow up with her. I'm sorry, what do you mean a survey? So uh, to submit the housing needs assessment, it's through like this, a survey with DOLA. It's not just submitting the report. So they have.
Like a market research survey?
Uh, like, do you want to put anything?
If, uh, ultimately, it was our expectation that when we submit the housing needs assessment, we would simply submit them the report and everything would be hunky-dory. Uh, but instead, they want us to do some work for them. And so they gave us a big, long survey to fill out with a whole bunch of the information that's embedded in the report. And there are a couple of questions that were, um, we have to get some clarification on, probably from EPS at this point, um, because there are some, there are some provisions like how many households exist within each jurisdiction and what are the AMIs of those households? That is, you know, we've, we're kind of piecing it together with the various tables within the report. Um, but I, I think we're going to be asking EPS, just give us one spot for this, please. Um, so it.
We have to complete the survey that DOLA has developed for those, those jurisdictions pending a housing needs assessment.
Correct. So it's, it's, it's just a little bit more involved than we had anticipated. Um, and some of these rules, as, as we've talked about the Prop one, two, three process, some of these rules have shifted as we moved, right? And so our expectations at the front end were we'll submit that report. We got it done. We compiled all the feedback. Great. We're going to just ship it right in like we do our budget every year. And it's like, oh, well, they won't let us put it in the file until we complete their survey too. So.
Thank you.
Uh, I was just afraid it was going to be another community survey.
Not that kind of survey.
Okay. Uh, so moving on, as part of the local planning capacity grant, that there's two deliverables. One is tied to my position and the reporting and number site of the housing code update project through our co-consultant, Logan Simpson. So for our first deliverable, everything's on track there. Our monthly reports for August will be submitted by the end of the month. Um, working with Ramona on that. Thank you, Ramona. And, um, our Q three report will be, um, I'll be preparing that here in the coming weeks for the middle of next month, which is due by October thirtieth. So moving on to our grant deliverable two, which is the housing code update project. Um, this one is a bit more comprehensive and I anticipate you might have questions about the housing code update project timelines and we can discuss that shortly. But first I wanted to go over some recent updates before moving on to next steps for the coming weeks. So just a recap from last month, on August twenty-seventh, the VOC appointed the twelve members, twelve members to serve on the SSR group. On September eighth, we had our monthly, uh, SMR HA meeting with the board and they decided to not appoint a member due to the overlap from the local governments and the VOCC representative. On September sixteenth, we met with Logan Simpson to review the draft SSR packet and listening session schedule. They provided an overview of their preliminary review of the land use quote code, including the initial takeaways and recommendations.
Well, great.
The, the meeting concluded with action items assigned to county staff as well as Logan Simpson. On September eighteenth, Jared and Megan shared information on CODO county lines, mentioning the housing code update. Encouraging listeners to stay tuned for the upcoming community listening sessions. On September twenty-first, there was an ad in newspaper that was published promoting the October community listening session. The county website has also been updated with information about the dates and location, along with a survey link for individuals enough for either thirty-minute one-on-one session with the county's co-consultant, Logan Simpson, or for a one-hour group session depending on everybody's availability. So for the week of September twenty-second, our current week that we're in, staff and Logan Simpson are finalizing the SSR packet, new meeting agenda. SSR will be informed of the first meeting date in October, as well as receiving the agenda materials for review before the end of the week. In addition, a mass email will be distributed to the stakeholders to announce upcoming community listening session. The stakeholders include utility providers, local government representative, beach ways, developers, hospitality owners, west end visioning facilitators. Uh, this is a master list that staff has, um, added to based off of previous outreach events.
And do the, is that, does that list include members of the SSR? Because I think they are, I view them as, as a conduit, you know, to the community and a information back and forth. So I think it'd be really helpful to share that with them and I'd love to see that as well. So I can start distributing that.
They will get a, um, very similar email, more so for their first initial SSR meeting. But, um, I can relay, um, some of that same language, like now about the community listening sessions and that schedule as well.
And ask them to help kind of spread the word because they are, you know, are linked to the community. And I'd love to see that too. I can post on social media and.
I also wonder about giving that outreach that you will be the stakeholder outreach to all of the applicants, original applicants to the SSR, just because I, there was communication with a lot of those folks that like, hey, you weren't appointed to this roundtable, but we would like to get, you know, there's going to be community listening sessions and just so they're really on the forefront of knowing when these events are happening so that they can take, take part if they would so choose.
Commissioner Waring has arrived. Did you have her sleep, Lance?
No, he's in memo at starting time.
Oh, gosh, okay. We're glad you're here. I'm glad you're okay. Um, yeah, I think that we should do as much, um, outreach as possible for these three days of listening sessions. And I wonder too, um, Megan Knowles, I'm looking at you, if we could do some sort of a news release and try to get, I saw the ad in the paper, that was outstanding, but also like an article and maybe a news story. Because this is our real opportunity and I, to, to start to engage the public and I don't want it to hear later, only never heard about it. No? So I think, yes. Oh, is that a thumbs up? Yeah.
All right. So, um, moving back to our community listening schedule, so that's going to take place October sixth, seventh, and eighth. Details also can be found on the county website under the housing code update page. Um, but I'll have a quick overview for anybody listening online today. On Monday, October sixth, we'll be in Telluride at the Wilkinson Library in the program room from two to four. On Tuesday, October seventh, there are several options. An early morning session in Telluride from seven to nine at the Wilkinson Library Program Room. An afternoon session from four-thirty to six as at the Wilkinson Library Room. Uh, excuse me, in the meeting room one, and then an evening session at Ofer at Town Hall from six to seven. And then on Wednesday, October eighth, we'll have two more sessions, one in Norwood from seven to ten at the Sheriff's Annex Building, then in Placerville from twelve-thirty to two at the schoolhouse. We encourage everyone to attend whichever session works best for them and ensure their input with Logan Simpson.
I'm curious about the, the Down Valley in Norwood um, scheduled times. Just wondering if there was any, um, consideration of having an evening session for all the working folks. I can imagine Wednesday from seven to ten AM is going to be pretty hard for most community members to make that. Um.
The thought there behind the, the early, um, time in Norwood was, uh, from Logan Simpson thinking that they could catch people on their way to work as it was early enough. But, um, I could definitely circle back around and see if there is um, an opportunity to also include evening schedule or at least adjust the Placerville time.
Yeah, Placerville, I mean, you're, you're not going to get any working people then.
Yeah, and I, just my feedback from being a commuter from Norwood, I, I, it would be, I, I think it is going to be challenging for people to make that midweek in the morning when they're commuting to work. Um, just feedback for, for, for thought about potentially offering up an evening session would be really good.
Of course. Uh, appreciate that feedback.
And maybe one of the target sessions could be over lunch like that. I don't know what else they're working around, but like that ten to the, the sixth of October, two to four PM. I mean, if that were like twelve to two, that could be better for people. And that could even catch some commuters um, on their lunch break. And what will happen at these, um, at these meetings?
Great question. Okay. Get into that in a minute.
Okay.
Um, I also wanted to bring a couple of items to your attention that have come up this week. As you can imagine, coordinating the logistics for these meetings has had a lot of moving parts between seeking out with our SSR members' availability, reserving meeting spaces and coordinating with our communications coordinator, Megan, website, uh, website updates. Um, things haven't gone as smoothly as we hoped, but we're navigating the bumps as best as we can. So one example that we initially wanted to hold, uh, one example is we initially wanted to hold a meeting in Mountain Village. Unfortunately, there was a scheduling conflict with the conference room there, so we pivoted and reserved another space at the library instead. We also had a few community members reach out with questions about the Ofer meetings and some folks felt caught off guard by the project. I just wanted to clarify that the towns of Ofer, Ofer, Norwood, Sawpit, and Mountain Village each operate and live their own building and/or land use code. Um, so these listening sessions we're hosting in these areas are opportunities for interested builders, county property owners, residents who want to learn more and share feedback. So just wanted to.
And what about the town of Tyrrhite as well, right? They're all, they have their own code too?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I, I just wanted to mention on that front, you know, there, there is this kind of challenge that we, this code update is specific to unincorporated county, right? Um, not to say that good ideas aren't good ideas across code variations. Um, so we just kind of want to hear, we, if you do live in one of these places or have developed in one of these places, you might have really good ideas about what works well in those locations, right? So there, there is a little bit of give and take that maybe you aren't looking at a project in the unincorporated county, but we want to hear some of those experiences of what worked well or maybe what didn't work well, so we don't make similar missteps. So.
And I can't imagine there isn't more than one meeting room in Mountain Village. If that was really the kind of, could we help you with that maybe? What was the session you wanted to have in Mountain Village?
Um, I have to go by one of the schedule. I would want to say it was Tuesday, but, uh, yeah, I spoke to a couple of different people at Mountain Village, including Drew and Ashell, and yeah, just scheduling conflicts.
What about TMBOA? Did you talk to them? They have a nice conference room right at Blue Mesa.
Um, we, we can revisit that, uh, the meeting locations and all of that is on the website. We, of course, can make changes to that, but, um, happy to look into that. All right. Uh, so that was a lot of information that we covered. So let's take a look at the latest project schedule, Logan Simpson, and then happy to answer any further questions you can have. Um, I did print out the schedule for you, but it's also projected on the screen. So the project timeline with notes and adjustment reflecting that over community. So the project timeline with notes and adjustment reflecting that October community listening sessions. This aligns with our project's community engagement plan, which outlines a cadence of one to three public events. The first series of these sessions will focus on housing constraints and opportunities, which is our October series. Then we will be followed by series two, which is code barriers and solutions. Uh, that is going to be taking place between January through April of twenty twenty six. And then series three is the draft of an, or you know, slated for April through September of twenty twenty six. And so the boxes on the project timeline break out those different series. Any questions?
Just about what the community listening session format will be. Are we going to get to that?
Sure, do you want to take a reading? Okay?
Yeah, I mean, so some of the prep material that we've got, um, you know, outlines baseline information um about the housing situation and about zoning. Um, and the listening sessions, I believe, will, you know, they're not going to be really structured with you know, presentations where we're getting up and talking to people, talking, you know, giving a lecture and then uh, you know, leaving a Q and A time. It's more, it is for us to listen. So for people to come, tell us their thoughts, their ideas, very free form. Um, you know, because uh, you know, we kind of feel that by not putting us, you know, as much of a structure around it, we can um better meet people if where, you know, where they are and how they communicate and how they articulate their thoughts. Um, and uh, we'll have a uh, um, a uh what was said, what was heard document, um, kind of ongoing to document um everything and refer back to it and um, and you know, there may be some, you know, some person may have a one-off comment that nobody else thinks about that turns out to be, you know, a catalyst for significant change. Um, we might hear a lot of comments about something that in the end we say, you know, for whatever reason, that's not what we're going to proceed with. But you know, just right now, we're very much baseline, trying to keep uh, get as much in, uh, input and feedback as we can right now. Ideas, thoughts, any identification of issues and uh, and then use that to, to move on. So um, you know, these really are, you know, the, these are called listening sessions for a reason. We're listening, we're not telling.
Okay, and then um, there also, in the paper, said something about one-hour small group sessions.
So yeah, um, you know, we can meet one-on-one with people, but if, you know, somebody says, hey, you know, my organization or um, my significant friend group uh wants to all sit down with you, um, we're, we're willing to schedule.
And those would be um outside the listening session, maybe separate?
Uh, there's some times within, within those. Um, so you know, if you look at the survey and how to sign up, you get a better idea of how uh, how people get on the calendar, because you know, we are working with a very compact uh, time, you know, where, you know, based on the availability of the Logan Simpson staff, you know, they, they can't be here for weeks. So it's going to be a.
And I'm, I'm, I might add, I, I see the, you know, door to having those meetings being, you know, if I want to sign up today, uh, I'm going to go to the website or I'm going to use the survey information. There is going to be similar to a lot of our, you know, functionality, there's times, you can just pick one. And that's reserved time that Logan Simpson is going to say, Commissioner Anne Brown is going to come sit down with me, or this group is going to sit down with me and that's the opportunity, there's going to be you know, thirty-minute sessions that you can select, there's going to be hour sessions you can select, and I think you'll be able to identify, you know, who's coming. And so that's kind of the tool we're using to schedule our time. And then in addition, I just wanted to mention the, the SSR meeting is happening on the sixth at, starting at four o'clock, and that again is open to the public, but we, we kind of want to focus that, you know, that focus group, so to speak, on the big picture of the project, kind of orient them to that project. Um, they'll have some pre-reads that are coming out, hopefully in the next couple of days. I, I think we have active email traffic happening right now of um, back and forths on that. And then, you know, so that'll be focused, so listening to some of the ideas that are happening is always available.
Great.
And just because, you know, this is the, you know, the three-day time period where we have you know, presence here, that doesn't mean that we can't set up more meetings via Zoom. Uh, if we need to, to accommodate, uh, you know, groups and individuals uh, that uh, you know, have more to say.
And when you say those SSR meetings are going to be open to the public, is that, does that mean so there will be outside public like engagement or the public can listen in?
They, it is for listening.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense as far as just um efficiency of the meeting. That's great that people will be able to tune in and hear what's being said and shared at those meetings.
Yeah, we're providing lots of options to people, for people to give us their feedback, to tell us what they think. Um, you know, they can always email us, they can always submit it through the county portal. Uh, like I said, you know, like we've all said, they can set up meetings with us. Um, but it's, you know, in order to use the SSR's time the best, um, members of the public can listen, they'll be recorded, they'll, you know, end up on our YouTube channel for people that want to go back and listen later.
And they can comment later in writing or however they'd like to submit. Yeah, but just not live public comment.
Correct.
That makes sense, as you said, for efficiencies.
Yeah.
Um, and then I was a little confused about, or I didn't understand, the outreach series two, outreach series three, just do those those sort of sections or um pieces of the plan, do they include public outreach as well?
And uh, hasn't, the schedule for that hasn't been developed, but I imagine it's going to be very similar to uh community listening sessions. It's going to be happening in October. It's just going to be as we move forward with the, the project, the different phases we approach.
Okay.
As we get into having drafts prepared, they'll probably become more focused.
Yeah.
Um, you know, right now it's casting a very broad net.
Totally.
So.
Okay, that makes sense. Andrea, I had shared with you content information for a lot of restaurant owners that I know are involved with um housing, you know, spent a lot of their time working on employee housing. Are you able to pull a group together for October when, you know, when Logan Simpson is here?
Um, I did receive your email and I did add all of their contact information to our master stakeholder list. Um, so they will be receiving an email letting them know if they haven't already heard about um the community listening sessions in October. Um, I can extend that to if they would like me to schedule something, I can offer that. Um, but I don't know what their availability is going to be.
I, I think that would be nice because uh, we don't actually have restaurant, as I recall, representation on the SSR. And yet they are, though I know of however many I sent to you that I just individually know are really spending a lot of time on housing and may be able to provide some input, whether it's individual or together, whatever's most efficient, but I really hope that we will make a special outreach to them, if we could.
And you mentioned ho- the hospitality realm, which, you know, I, just kind of as we're evolution in discussing this and knowing the housing challenges currently and certainly moving forward with, within the hospitality hotel realm. It might be really worthwhile to try to set up some sort of a specific um, session with those folks to to just hear, hear from them directly on this if scheduling allows.
Yeah, and it might be that uh, we develop that as more of a Zoom meeting, uh, virtual.
Right, could be for both of those industries, yeah.
Um, because uh, you know, we've already got an incredible amount of uh, uh, you know, stuff programmed into those three days, so.
Yeah.
Exciting. Any other questions?
One quick thought, knowing that we are considering really trying to focus on restaurants and um hotels, is it maybe why is it going to be an entire conversation to businesses, business owners? Or is that not necessary?
I, I, I think businesses, you know, should be in there as well. Um, you know, we've got major employers represented on the SSR. Um, but uh, uh, yeah, the smaller entities and such, you know, we'd love to hear from them. Um, and uh.
Makes sense that we've got the major employers represented, we've got kind of the next tier um, that we're going to try to target and then hopefully the smaller outfits will be able to pick up the newspaper and get the memo and get involved.
Yeah, we don't have a, um, we don't have a uh Chamber of Commerce, but we do have TMBOA has, although that's, yeah, they have a merchants association, but that's Mountain Village. Um, yeah. Uh, I'm trying to think.
Yeah, um, you'll just, you know, continue to, uh, and this might be a good uh uh, social media message, you know, just short, sweet saying, do you want to be on our contact list? Email us.
Great idea.
Uh, because it's really, you know, we're, we're having to build the list.
Right.
And uh, um, you know, we don't have a, you know, countywide mass, uh, email list.
Right.
Um, the most comprehensive uh, up-to-date list is held by Telluride Tourism Board. And they have every register business in Telluride and Mountain Village uh segmented by sector in their email list. And Kira Skinner, for this purpose, she, she will not share that list publicly, but um she will share specific things requested by the government, such as that. So that will be our best avenue, in my opinion.
Yeah, and Kira, uh, Kira Skinner is definitely on our email list, so.
And, yeah, we'll, we'll arrange more conversations around, you know, taking feverish notes so we can circle back on, you know, getting some of these special or more direct outreach to some of these groups, uh, talking with Kira about, because I know they're always, you know, a little sensitive about, they don't want to spam all of their users, so we want to make it meaningful and um you know, get, and, and I think one of the things is, it's, it's been quiet. And I, I'm sure that quietness, um, you know, leads people to ask questions about what's going on in this project and we've just been working behind the scenes and I think that we're um ready to kind of kick the door open and do a lot of public outreach and uh hopefully get some good attendance at those uh sessions on the sixth, seventh and eighth. And I think that will also teach us a lot of lessons about who is engaging, maybe who's not engaging and we can do kind of a regroup and retargeting at that point as well.
That's great. So please also just, I think I may have already said this, but share whatever you send with the commissioners too, so that we can forward it to our contacts and really make sure people we know are interested are aware.
Well, thanks. All right, well, thanks for your time and I'll see you about the next month, the upcoming October fifteenth. Unless there's any other questions, comments, I'll be back.
I just have one last comment to kind of hit on what I was bringing up previous about Down Valley residents having opportunity. When I kind of think through, I think if, if you could only find one place or time to accommodate an evening schedule, this, the Placerville Schoolhouse would be best because it's more centrally located for all Down Valley residents and commuters and just people living on all the mesas and um I think that would be a really good addition for including people that live Down Valley and.
Would that be like a five-thirty start or six o'clock start? What do you think?
I mean, yeah, I would, I think like a five to seven session would be good. Um. I imagine these sessions aren't going to be like you sit down and have to sit there for all two hours if your, if your time doesn't allow, so for people commuting through, I think five to seven would be pretty spot on. Yeah.
Appreciate your feedback.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Okie dokie. Um, we will not be ending at ten o'clock because we need to carry on to manager now.
Good afternoon, good morning commissioners. I'm used to saying good afternoon. Um, as you may know, Town of Ofer um is having some water issues, they had a broken pipe. Uh, Jennifer Dinsmore reached out um on behalf of the Sheriff's Office to indicate that they are going to be on a, on a boil water order uh until that is fixed. And there are contractors working on that as we speak. Um, Joe May from the Democratic Party and the Democratic Women's Caucus has asked uh for the commissioners to give a layman's term overview of our two ballot measures and uh, of the two hundred fifty words, so I was going to offer to do that or see if that's something that you guys would prefer to do on your own or work with me on, yes.
Why don't we ask Mike to do the first draft?
Okay.
Please.
Or Megan, our communications coordinator. Yeah?
Why don't I do the first draft and I'll set, shoot you and then we could.
Open it up on a Google Doc?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's great, really, just explaining the nuances of twenty-four, two thirty-three and complicated that is to understand. I think Mike would be able to take a good crack at that, so thank you.
Great, and I just want to make sure that at the final edit before it's sent, that um that it's very clear, um, not getting us into that advocacy standpoint.
Perfect.
Awesome. Um, next up, I know CCI and CCAT have um reached out to the commissioners about their strategic growth plan. Um, and are asking for comments on that, and so uh.
I don't know if it's comments anymore. I think comments are done, right? Then they've issued the final report. And yeah, go ahead.
I would, I would say they've issued the draft reports and they are soliciting feedback um, on that and, and I think there are the sessions where they'll be kind of going over it. And, and what they're really trying to get, I believe, is the last kind of, uh, here's the big picture, here's what we pulled together, are there any final comments kind of uh? And so that's, I, I know I've scheduled to sit through a session on the second
Great.
uh, for that, uh, and I've started paging through that hundred and sixty-three page document. Um, and you know, again, I, I, I believe they're to final draft mode because um, there's going to be things that really don't fit San Miguel County within this. Um, and I think it behooves us to make those comments at this point, um, because these may be our next uh set of uh both suggestive and maybe required things we need to do to access this housing funding or even what the legislature is going to look at to amend um various things that we do, so.
Thank you, Jared. Yeah, I appreciate you being on top of that.
Awesome. Um, the good news, I know we had been looking for a conduit in this right of way uh, for working with Clear Networks, um, and I was able to get the ASBILTS and pass those on to them. Um, they are planning to commence their construction this week on this fiber build from Ilium down through Placerville. And they have requested digging waivers uh potentially to extend beyond our October fifteenth um, no dig date from Roan Bridge on the east end. I've urged them to work from east to west, knowing that as you go down lower and the frost line is not going to be hitting at the same time, so we'll have an update on that. They're proposing six weeks um from the start of this week. Given our previous experiences, that often ends up taking longer. So uh, a lot of these will be fiber attached to Sampa poles, they have a pole attachment agreement. But there are also some specific easements which we've provided to them through Salt Pit and Placerville as well as um other areas where they're going to have to be digging, but this is great news, given that they received this grant uh, over two years ago and now it's finally getting underway and it will result in dramatically. And now it's finally getting underway and it will result in dramatically improved, um, internet service for our down valley residents.
And how will residents along the way tap into that?
So they've already reached out to the residents and subdivisions along the way through Trunk Road, Placerville, Fall Creek, um, and along, anybody that is connected to Sampa will have the ability to tie into fiber, um, via a drop from their power pole. So that's a private service, um, that folks have that will have the ability to connect to. But we did support their grant application and it's great to see it finally underway. So, um, last week after the commissioner or during the commissioner meeting, I was able to meet with representatives of CDOT and, um, was able to share with them some of the mapping that the county possesses from our LIDAR and other aerial flights in order to show them where they could be working on the rockfall mitigation on Keystone Hill as well as on Norwood Hill. Originally, they thought that they were going to have too many challenges with Keystone Hill rockfall mitigation such that they were just focusing on Norwood Hill, um, after showing them, um, the worst areas and the ownership of those, um, rights of way. They are going to revisit and see if they could do some portion of Keystone Hill starting next year or the following year. Next year, they're going to be focusing on, uh, Norwood Hill. They're going to be proposing a plan by the end of October, uh, at which point I think we can start sharing with the public what it is. It's going to be additional rock scaling or minor rock scaling, but significantly netting and, uh, rock barriers. Um, I've asked them to relook at the two, um, overhanging boulders, specifically the one that is of most concern on Norwood Hill. But, um, they're looking to go out to bid, um, this winter for a start of construction in the spring.
Fantastic.
When that happens, we know that there will be some delays. They understand that they're going to, um, that we have commuter challenges and specific times of the year that we're going to be asking them to avoid or shut down or ensure that at least one lane of traffic can remain. But this will be a two-year project, so there will be some traffic impacts for the next two years to add those safety improvements. Juvenile Services, uh, as we know, received a grant to make their additional, um, person who was part-time into a full-time position. And now we need office space for them. Uh, so Jennifer Dinsmore reached out asking if we would allocate more space in the Froon Building. Um, I'm not asking for a decision or input on that today. I just wanted to let you know, um, that we have other uses of the Froon that we have to be sensitive to such that, um, we can't just uh, keep carving out more offices. We did that once for Juvenile Services already. Um, so we will come up with a, a proposal and share it with you. On September twenty eighth will be the, it's a rescheduled date for the four H awards picnic at the Red Veil Community Center. So I want to make sure that you knew about that if you wish to attend. Um, it's a great opportunity. Uh, recognize the youth who won awards during fair. Um, and throughout their four H season, um, Monica Christensen had been proposing to be away and she's since revised her schedule, um, with her son so that she will be back, um, available for this and then in the office for four H and for CSU extension. I don't know if you had known that she was planning, she had to, she was planning to be away for, um, four weeks. Oh, but now, um, some things have positively progressed in her life and she will be back at work.
Okay.
Um, we've, we're assisting one of our employees with the down payment assistance program in their first time purchase of a home in San Miguel County. And when that is completed, we're looking at, um, doing a small remodel to the facility or the county owned unit that they were in. That's at our Norwood Roan Bridge shop. Um, and so hopefully we'll have a unit available for a county employee soon.
And that down payment, that's great news. Is the down payment assistance program, is that the, our, um, own, like the county's ten thousand dollars? If you work here a certain number of years? Okay.
If you have worked here a minimum of two years with good reviews, um, then you're eligible to participate in the program at your tenth, the completion of your tenth year of service, that loan is forgiven. It is written though as a loan in second place to their primary lender. So if they were to leave the county, uh, or default on their loan, they would be required to repay any existing balance. Essentially one thousand dollars per year of services forgiven up to their tenth year.
That's great news.
Yeah. Um, Star Jameson, we're working on applying for a grant for two, um, EV pickup trucks, F-150 Lightnings. One would tentatively be allocated to Roan Bridge and one would be to the building department. And then looking to reallocate our building department, uh, pickup truck to the maintenance department. And, um, Jared has good news. He has purchased our first electric vehicle. Um, so we're gonna
He's just ordered it.
Ordered it? What, what is it? Oh, one of these trucks?
No, it's a shit. It's separate from this. So this grant would allow us basically to buy the trucks for half price.
Okay.
So we're looking at twenty-four thousand per vehicle to own, um, these F-150 Lightnings. The one Jared, uh, procured was through our enterprise leasing contract. But also because we know that these significant incentives are going to be sunsetting at the end of this month. Um, he acted expeditiously and so we will have a four, four-door, four-wheel drive Chevy Equinox coming soon.
Two of them?
Did you pull the trigger on the other?
Yes.
I agree.
Well done.
So we will. And, and that is one of the things is with those incentives going away federally, you know, there's, there's kind of a push. And so even though our charging infrastructure isn't complete, you know, I, I decided to take a flyer and that's kind of the subtext that Mike is mentioning is I didn't really ask him. Um, but I figured we would, um, it'll pay dividends.
So, and then after I got over my surprise, someone's like, but we don't have our chargers.
Are the chargers being installed this fall, right?
Yes, they are. Yeah. So, and this, unlike our sheriff's office, uh, these vehicles, um, shouldn't have the level of delay. So, um, be excited to try those out. We know that we have a need for, you know, I think we have proposed two to four vehicles. So if we get this grant, we'll be right on target with our full four vehicles. Um, and excited to start using those and hopefully changing hearts and minds.
Lance, did you have a question?
Good question. I'm not familiar with Chevy's line well enough to know if the Equinox is hybrid or full electric?
Full electric.
I, I do believe they, they have a hybrid option, but we, we did select the full electric option. Um, and we did spec the, there is a version, a standard EV version and there's a long range EV version and we did ask them to spec the long range EV version.
Right.
Maybe get partway to Denver or half the way to Denver?
We're, we're thinking that these will be for our regular commuter vehicles, those that come from Nukla or Bontrons or further, further back, but on a set route essentially back and forth. When folks go to Denver, we're still gonna, um, give them the hybrids or the, um, gas vehicles to ensure that they're not having to wait for charging.
And if I understood it, those incentives didn't apply to hybrids, just the full EVs, right?
Correct. I, I believe based on my conversations with Star, um, we, we needed to buy at least plug-in vehicles to meet our, the demands of our EV charger grant. And so in that scenario, we could use a plug-in hybrid or we could use a EV and we just went ahead and pulled the trigger on fully EVs. Um, and as Mike said, we, we hope it will change people's minds about the capabilities of these vehicles. Um, and frankly, we, we thought it a good idea because for each of these two, we, we end up getting a nine thousand dollar rebate. So it really buys down our costs to acquire and start using these vehicles. So.
Would it be too cheesy to have like some kind of a plaque or a sticker made that says something like, you know, San Miguel County runs on EV or something like that? If we really are trying to set an example on the bumper or I don't know, is that cheesy? I see it on buses.
I think we have, I think we have time to, um,
Think about that, yeah.
To order those and think about how we want to say that.
Okay. You guys are laughing at me. That's fine.
I think definitely for some of the vehicles, that would be especially those that are really public facing.
Yeah.
That would be a great idea.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, other than that, I read through the legislative priorities and, um, I'm prepared to run through them if you would like to at this time, or we could save that for next week. But I definitely have, um, some that I think I would urge us to support, some that I'm completely, or oppose, and then those that I would really like your thoughts on.
That's great.
When, when would you like to have that discussed?
I had planned and I probably didn't remember to ask you about that. Yeah, that we could do that next week. I know we'll be in Egner, but, um, it could also be an interesting subject for anybody in the public to hear. So, um, it's possible we'll get an updated on that, update on that summary, that twenty-six page or hundred page summary on Monday, but it probably would be just subtle nuances. So, yeah, I just sent what I had so that we could all have a little time to review it before Wednesday, next Wednesday. And that could take a while.
It will.
Yeah. What do you think? How much time should we?
Hour and a half.
Really? That long?
I mean, how, a lot of these, I think we could focus on just those that are germane to San Miguel County and get that down to forty-five minutes?
I mean, Lance and I are going to sit in on that session, split the day. And I personally would really appreciate understanding this thoroughly to take the stance on behalf of the county. Um, so I, I would suggest we take the proper amount of time to really be able to discuss what's important.
And we will have to vote on all of them. Um, in terms of further input for the two of you who will be sitting in on that CCI meeting, I'll be attending on Thursday a CCAT meeting which preps for that. So I'll share my notes from that. And then, um, what was the other point I wanted to make? Oh, during that, um, during the CCI meeting, there's a robust CCAT, um, chat that goes on. So we can get feedback there too. And I'll make sure you're, are you on that Signal chat, um, channel yet?
No.
No, okay. We'll get you on that. You're on it. I know Galena. Um, sorry, is that not? It's, it's a pub, it's public information.
Is it publicly available?
Um, yeah, you could, sorry, but you can cora it. Yeah.
Sorry, who's it between?
Yeah. Oops.
Whenever you say signal, it, it just goes beep.
Does it? Okay.
Cause signals purpose is, um, a little cryptic.
It's encrypted, it's encrypted for sure. Yeah, it's for, for sure. But, um, it is, it's, uh, with the staff and CCAT commissioners. That's how we communicate. Yeah.
And you're the only one on it for now?
Galena's on it as well because she attended a, um, a, uh,
I'm sitting in on CCI.
CCI meetings, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it, anything, it's similar to like email. If there's back and forth between two of our commissioners that can turn into a public meeting about, you know, substantive policy
Okay.
issues.
It, um, that's interesting. We have never had any back and forth on that.
We'll definitely need to continue to be very cognizant about that. There has been no crossover because we're, we just divide and take part in those. So when there's different subject matters that Ann and I have been focusing on, like I've been focusing on agriculture and natural resources and public lands.
Um, there are other counties that have multiple commissioners on the chat.
We're aware of that.
Okay. So maybe what you should do, I think it's, I'm really glad you met your, your, I love how you guys surf. Uh, maybe Galena, um, like I think you two both need to be on it for purposes of that meeting on the third. And then, but maybe, uh, and then you'll each just be on it during the time you're sitting at the meeting. The other person won't be on it and I won't either in terms of like engaging. I mean, could even take our names off if that makes, if that feels more comfortable. And then going forward, we should probably take you off unless you're at a meeting.
That sounds
Does that sound appropriate?
That'd be better.
Um, and yeah, I really haven't engaged on that.
No?
Much at all, other outside of, well, I haven't engaged on outside of those few meetings that I took part in.
Yep. Yeah. And it's, um, it's not always policy. It's often like logistics or I had a call and people will say, what kind of security system do you have in your county? It's like your listserv that you're on.
Right. Yeah. And I think as long as you are, are all aware and if of that you're multiple of you are on it and if there is discussion about legislation or anything like that, that you're not, if one of you is engaging, another one of you isn't like, I agree, great idea.
Perfect.
Right. Cause that's you engaging in a policy discussion.
That makes a lot of sense.
The other concern I have with it is just that one person can delete a signal chat. Uh, one party
Yes.
is involved. And so as it pertains to open records. Um, and I, I wouldn't, and I want to inadvertently share somebody else's, what, what a different county's public record issue might be to have control by another party. So I wouldn't want, if you were taking a stance and doing everything right and not communicating, not doing any violation, somebody else could inadvertently delete your chat. And then it appears suspect if we were to get cored and say, oh, sorry, that doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, interesting. Alright, so if I made a comment, another person on that signal chat could, or could delete my comment?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
How signal works.
Or, or could share that with somebody else. I just, that's why I like text messages because we know that our IT keeps copying, uh, of all our text messages, um, should we have an issue.
Okay.
Just be cautious.
For that conversation, yeah. Yeah.
Signal for our attention.
Yeah. Actually, I mean, I think, I, I understand that there's sort of like, when we say signal, like Mike says, it's like, oh, that's being used for something, you know, um, towards
But it's also just a chat.
Exactly. That's not the purpose of that signal chat. It's literally just so that we can all coordinate and communicate. But you are correct. Sometimes there are policy discussions, particularly during meetings or legislative sessions or things like that. And so it makes sense to just have one.
Which if it's between you and a singular commissioner from another county.
I understand. Yep. I understand. Okay, great. And the other thing I've, in terms of like, I want to ask, um, or discuss with you all. Um, because, so basically next Friday, the third is the CCI Legislative Priorities Meeting, right? So that's what we're all preparing for. And, um, the question is, we're going to have a discussion next Wednesday, the first about what, uh, about how San Miguel County feels about these, um, these proposals. But then on Thursday, I'll get some additional insight from CCAT. And then on Friday, during the meeting, additional insight might be shared by other commissioners. And so do we authorize Lance and, and Galena to kind of change San Miguel's position? If they have different understanding or more information or are they locked in or how does that work?
I think, um, my sense and from the past, you would give them that authority.
Yeah.
Cause they, you're, you voted them as your representative to that organization. And then if the, the basis of the policy changes.
Yes.
Um, I, we would want them to have that authority and not be locked into a position that could be nullified.
I was hoping you were going to say that. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, and that's how I perceive this.
Yep.
Able to take the information we have at the time and make the best decision for the county.
Yep. Great. Thanks. Okay. Sorry, Mike, I was interrupting you.
Not at all.
Cause you
No.
brought up, you'd review those, that policy statement.
Um, that's all I have for today.
All right. Jared?
I think the only couple of items that I have are, um, I think as of yesterday, Mike and I and the rest of the team have finally finished all of our budget meetings with all of the departments. And so that is, you know, a, a really great milestone. So. And so that is, you know, a, a really great milestone, so all the internal conversation, I wouldn't say all the internal conversations are over. Um, but we've had engagements with all of our departments on what their budget requests are for the year. And so now we're really bearing down on getting our draft developed and uh we'll be sharing that soon, so. Little bit of a milestone, and thanks again to Paige, Ramona, and Heather for their work on that, um couldn't be done without them.
Well done.
I think the other item I wanted to mention, I, I already mentioned that there is that Prop one, two, three regional, we have a Prop one, two, three regional meeting next Thursday that I'll be attending, and this is uh between ourselves and some of our regional partners, just talking about our various commitments that we've made for Prop one, two, three, and discussing with the state how we're addressing those, and, and ultimately, it'll be good to understand better how each one of our jurisdictions is, are working on those commitments, so. Uh, I mentioned the CCI Strategic Growth Report Review, that is next Thursday as well. And so I'll be attending that um and reviewing, and then just a a really great note, um I had been invited to attend and potentially just give a brief update of county projects at um Telluride Foundation's New Homeowner Orientation. Uh, I don't know if that's the official name, but that's gonna be next Tuesday on the thirtieth, they're giving a bit of a training class on if you're new to a house, you know, the housing effort, and you wanna know how to get a mortgage, how to budget, how to do all the things to uh open the door towards homeownership, um they're having a session and uh they asked me to come speak, even though I think it'll be completely unsatisfying for my part, so.
That's fantastic, that's, yeah, part of their housing initiative is education, that's great.
So it's, it's exciting to, to have that, um I've been fortunate to attend similar programs, you know, in other locations and uh I always learn something every darn time, so.
And that's next Tuesday, at what time and where?
Leave it to four o'clock. And uh I, I don't have all the details, it's um FTC conference. I'll, I'll have to follow up with that.
That's alright, I'm not gonna be able to attend, but just for the public is, we're announcing that. I'm sure they can find out from the
Foundation.
Foundation, yeah.
Um, and I think that's all I have, so, but open any questions, as always.
Ready? Alright. Lance, you wanna tell us what you've been up to?
Being late. And I apologize. Double check the notes and do not have anything to report beyond uh attended the CC four C A executive committee meeting. We are budgetarily on track, we are celebrating, going to be celebrating ten years of existence. There are preparations for some lean budget years.
Right. Lena?
Um, sure, I, I kinda have a lot here, so bear with me. I did tune in on uh to Representative Hurd's Telephone Town Hall last week on the seventeenth. Um, I wasn't able to stay on the call for the entirety of it, but I was on for about forty minutes. Um, there were over twenty-one thousand constituents who called in.
I couldn't get in, they told me it was full.
I, I know, I had to retry and retry and retry, and then I finally got in. Yeah, so I missed the, his, oh, part of his opening statements, um yeah, but yeah, it was very full, I think it pretty much overloaded their system.
Wow, twenty-one thousand, wow.
Yeah. I thought I would just give you a synopsis of what I thought was really relevant and maybe outside of what we, what we've discussed that um Rep Hurd has been doing or advocating for or not doing, um. But there were questions range, ranging from rural healthcare to water to public lands to the federal budget to First Amendment rights, um. Some of the highlights, Hurd was asked why he voted in line with Democrats to maintain Representative Ilhan Omar's committee seat after a resolution was filed to censor Omar um and strip her of all House committee assignments. Hurd was one of only four Republicans who voted against censoring Omar, claiming, I voted against a censor because it tried to strip another member of Con- Congress from committees and to silence her for exercising the First Amendment right to free speech. Um, his vote helped tip the scales, ending at two hundred and fourteen against censoring her and two hundred and thirteen four.
Wow.
Yeah, so he did really step out there, um and was received a lot of scrutiny for it from, from Republicans. In response to questions revolving around his support for the big beautiful bill and the pending cuts to Medicaid, uh he responded by supporting the concept of work requirements written into the bill that he claims will eliminate loopholes and encourage able-bodied people to go into the workforce to qualify for Medicaid. Um, a constituent called him out that the cuts to reimbursement rates for F Q H Cs um will hurt rural communities and their clinics, especially in the behavioral health realm. He pivoted here, bringing up the re- recent bipartisan bill, he helped introduce the Premium Tax Credit Extension Act, which aims to protect Colorado families, seniors, and small business owners from massive healthcare premium increases for another year while they figure out a permanent solution.
And do you know the status of that bill, was that the?
It, it's been introduced, but it has, it has not cleared the um Congress yet, yeah. Um, he was asked to respond on his stance in support of the Gunnison Outdoor Resources Protection Act, GORP Act. She responded that this has been a bipartisan effort forged over many years among diverse state stakeholders and is unanimously supported by commissioners from Gunnison County, ranchers, outdoor rep companies, hunters, anglers, and the general public. He's also been receiving a lot of scrutiny about his support for that act, um so he, he was under fire there. He, what I felt like dodged a direct question about the Dolores N C A, um and why he hasn't taken a formal stance on this, and he's still claiming that he, he needs more input um from industries before he takes a stance. I'm kind of holding there. And I may have missed a couple of things, cause like I said, I had to hop off the call before it fully ended, but those were some some highlights, I think he, you know, was throwing some softballs and questions, I didn't really address those because it's all, all that information is really out there, um but, yeah.
Um, I have, get his newsletter weekly or something, and he mentioned that oh boy, I, I, I um don't have it on the top of my mind, but something about how there's been some renegotiation of the B B the one big brutal bill, and that he had supported um adjustments for specifically to save or support rural healthcare and clinics, did he mention anything like that?
He mentioned it, but there was nothing substantive that he said has really come of that, so.
Okay, and it's interesting that the premium tax credits weren't part of that, but that's a whole separate bill, which is gonna make it harder, I think. To pass.
Yeah.
Anyway. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're attending that, I should have been more persistent, but that was a great update.
Yeah. On the eighteenth, I participated in the CCI Renewable Energy Working Group, um and the discussion mostly revolved around the question, what would it take to make renewable energy a net positive for your, your community? Um, and there's substantive conversation in, involving that, the concept of mandating a percentage of energy generated in any given renewable project to be dedicated to the local power grid. Just a concept, right, but uh some thought that this should be a discounted or pr- or prorated, some thought it should just be just be dedicated to the grid at going rates, um so we'll just use the example of a solar array and it um utility scale solar array twenty percent going to the local grid, and that would be part of like a mandated process.
Of course, we would have a problem with that, cause Sampa has a maximum amount they can generate locally, although that hopefully is changing the next in the future, from five percent to twenty percent.
Right, absolutely. There is a unanimous stance on no commissioners from any county throughout the state want to see a forced mandate of state-developed codes applied to county, to counties. Uh, many, many of the county's representatives are represented at this meeting already have regulations for renewables and did not want those regulations to be superseded by state codes. There are concerns about the zoning of renewable sites and how these properties are taxed. A lot, a lot of utility projects are able to maintain agricultural status and that, that taxation, of course, then reflects that, and so there has actually been legislation proposed from Dolores County Assessor and Commissioner Stanci about removing the status quo classification of energy facilities, so that's gonna be pro- proposed in this ne- next legislative session. Um, there were concepts discussed of instating excise taxes on renewables similar to oil and gas excise tax. Um, yeah, and so the ideas from this working group will be developed into a white paper that's going to be presented at the end of September.
Thank you so much for representing on that, Galena.
Yeah, absolutely, um and I did mention there's a lot of counties who already have regulations in place through their ten forty ones, or in our case, you know, we develop specific solar regulations, um and are ongoing updating our land use code, but there are a lot of counties who have nothing. And they were equally concerned that if their stat, state mandated codes that they're gonna be kind of hamstrung, it might not work for their counties.
So the last time this came up, which I think it was just last year, um those counties were able to convince, and I think legislation passed to, to do this, that what would be more helpful is if they provided, if the state provided examples of codes that we could work from, as opposed to just top-down saying, here's what the codes are.
Right, um well, I think what you're referencing is S B twenty-four two twelve. Which is the local government's renewable energy projects. And it's concerning measures to facilitate the construction of renewable energy prod- projects and in connection there within making an appropriation, um and this act requires sorry, I sound robotic, but I have this whole verbiage up here. It requires the Director of the Energy and Carbon Management Commission in the Department of Natural Resources at the request of a local government or tribal government to provide technical support concerning the development of local co- codes governing wind, solar, energy storage, um and any energy transmission projects. Or the review of renewable, renewable energy projects for which a local government receives an application for land use approval, this is anytime after June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So there, yes, there is that my technical assistant. But some counties have issue with it because they uh it, it doesn't always, there, there is some sort there's a process to it that some counties are not totally in favor of.
Oh, interesting.
Um, and I, I was kind of trying to sift through as to why, and I, I think so, yeah. Um, but, but it passed and that resource is available now, so. Yeah. I didn't update you all on this last week, but I think it's worth a mention, moving on to a new topic here. Um, W D C recently received a fifty thousand dollar grant through the Economic Development and International Trade Office. The purpose of this grant is to explore the feasibility of expanding into the semiconductor industry, um focusing on manufacturing micro-processing chips. Um, questions revolve around whether distribution is viable in the remote corner of our state, um so the study will ex- uh explore viability of distribution, export. And it will also explore if other areas of manufacturing are viable in the West End. Just what we see is constantly trying to diversify the economy on the West End, and this is just an effort to explore manufacturing. I also recently went out to the West End and I took a tour of the Crocker Bedford land, uh just outside Slick Rock, where I learned about I learned a lot, um Cole Crocker Bedford has been involved in the N- Dolores N C A process, he was for a very long time, so he just gave me his perspective on that process. History of the Dolores River flows from the inception of the Monazuma, Monazuma Water Pipeline, which was completed in eighteen eighty-nine. And then, of course, Mcfee Reservoir, which was completed in nineteen eighty-five, so just through those different chapters of history and just ecologically what the Dolores is looking like and, you know, fast forward to now. And um just, it was really useful getting his perspective. Uh, the same day, I met with community activist Amy Tuker in Naterita. Um, Amy's been very involved in the Dolores National Monument Opposition, but she has a different stance on the N C A. Um, so we talked about how the N C A could be revisited with stakeholders in the West End, um she has some I think really forward-thinking ideas on coordinating with federal agencies to involve local stakeholders and public lands policy.
And this would be for an N C A in the northern part of the Dolores, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and just potentially helping the Southern N C A along with potential, some more buy-in from neighboring communities. Uh, it was worth the stop, since I was in the neighborhood. Uh, and then yesterday, there's a West End stakeholder meeting um for the Four Seasons residents workforce influx, um and what was decided at that meeting is a community benefit coalition is going to be established, and this is gonna be configured of Mayors Paula Brown of Nuclea, Eugene Greenwood of Naterita, and Candy Meehan of Norwood, as well as as well as Commissioner Sean Pond from Montrose County. Um, John Bachroth from Norwood Fire and E M S is going to sit on the coalition, as well as Tim Pierce of Mustang Water Authority. Uh, and Sarah Bachman, who's the town attorney, attorney for Naterita, who has kind of been leading the stakeholder um group. And I as well am going to sit on the coalition. And the idea is to develop a community benefit agreement to present to Merrimack Ventures in the town of Mountain Village, which will outline potential solutions to offset the impacts of the influx of temporary and long-term workforce from the Four Seasons development. There's also a goal in this coalition to hold community outreach forums to give our residents opportunities to give feedback about concerns revolving around the potential increase of population in the West End. And to keep residents up to date on plans, engagement, and information revolving around um the Four Seasons workforce sightings. That's all I have to report today.
And um I did learn, I texted most of you, that um the Four Seasons property, closed on the acquisition of that property yesterday, so that is a big step in that, in that project.
Yes, and there's been quite a bit of holdup because they're waiting for their, um they as in Merrimack Ventures are waiting for financing to come through to close on that property, and the stakeholder meeting that was scheduled in mid-September was postponed due to that.
They had that closing.
Yeah, so I think there will be movement soon.
Good for you, Galena. Thank you for meaning that. Um, okay, last week on the eighteenth, I think that was Thursday, I attended the Behavioral Health Collaborative, that's a bi-monthly meeting of people involved in providing behavioral health services to the community, and the um Stedman Group sort of re-presented their behavioral health strategic plan, and we talked about next steps, which are essentially developing a steering committee of key community partners to discuss next steps. Um, you may recall, we had that presentation that I had been hopeful that the strategic plan would include next steps, but um it does. um, it doesn't. It, it, it did a really good job of kind of understanding where we are today, what the gaps are, how we could fill those in. But we don't yet have a plan or even the beginning of a plan of how to actually fill in all those gaps. So um, that is something that, that's the next step. In fact, I have to remind myself to follow up on that. Um, they also, um, the Behavioral Health Solutions Panel um noted that they have, the requests are in for their 2026 funding. They have requests for $786,000 and they have $450,000 available for granting. So there'll be some hard decisions to be made. And we went over the different grant requests. I think there are about 12 and they'll be working on that. Um, I attended the Tyron Regional Airport Authority Board Meeting also on Thursday. Hangar 30, which is the really big hangar, is virtually complete. There was a ribbon cut, cutting ceremony. Um, Kenny, the director or the, that's, I guess, I don't know what his title is. Sorry, but he runs the airport.
He's the fixed-based operator.
Yeah. FBI, well, he, or he's the president or is it FBI? Cause he also runs the commercial operation.
The FBI is the person in charge of running both.
Both operations. Okay. That's his title. Anyway, he mentioned that the project came in, uh, I think $500,000 below budget. Um, it was a $21 million project that included a million dollar contingency. And the contract is set up such that the 500,000 will be split between the airport, going back to the capital reserve and the contractor. And so it's good news. And in fact, the uh Cars and Colors, which is now called
Autumn Classic.
Thank you, is um having an event at the hangar Thursday night from five to seven. I think that's their first event of the weekend. Um, there was an executive session to discuss matters on the south side of the airport, which I excused myself from because there are some matters in there that will very likely come before the B O C C. Um, Matt Skinner, who is in charge of the, he's the lead of the airline guarantee program, reported that the load for service into Tyride Commercial Service on Denver Air Connection was up nine percent this summer. I always like to hear that because that's fewer people flying in and out of Montrose and having to drive up. Um, primarily from increased traffic from Denver. He also mentioned that he's always working, I believe, to um expand commercial service into T E X. Um, so that we can have more people arriving much closer to where they want to be. Um, and that he's working with um a public charter air service, which I was not familiar with. But it's um, it is what it sounds like. It's a chart. It's not a commercial service where you buy a ticket. It's a, you do buy a ticket, but it's a charter service. Um, and anyway, he felt like that was coming right along. So there could be expanded service. Um, he wasn't able to say who the operator is or where the flight would be going, but anyway, positive. Really positive meeting on Monday. We reconvened the co-responder planning group. I should say the sheriff's office brought us back together. Um, and we met on Monday. The meeting included representatives from the Tyred Fire Protection District, the sheriff's office, myself, Tyride, um, Marshall's office. I think that was about, of course, Axis Health Services. Um, I'm trying to think who else was on there, but anyway, um, it was very positive. I don't know if you recall, but we kind of got stuck on this um, last February, this past February. Um, and with a new sheriff in town, um, there's a different um interest level in the program. Dan's very supportive of this. Um, so we made a ton more progress than we had been able to previously. Um, the fire department Tyride has offered to provide a vehicle. TMO has offered office space where this team could be housed. Axis has agreed that they could hire, employ, train and supervise the full team. It would be two people, a behavioral health clinician and then kind of a um uh, team member who would, it's unclear exactly what their um qualifications would need to be, but not not like an EMT or a police officer or anything. It'd be, it could be somebody with um less training. Maybe a peer support person. Anyway, that Axis would, previously they had only been willing or able, I guess, to manage the clinician, but they said they can hire, they can handle the whole team. And then um, it sounds like the sheriff's office maybe has someone on their team who would kind of lead the redevelopment of the project. So um, it's super really positive. Um, we had Deputy Dave Wadley was there and filled us in on, you know, the kind of the realities of what he faces on the ground. Many of our first responders do. Um, and I think that, that his um initiative has also helped kind of bring this conversation along. So I'm super grateful to him. He, as you may recall, is um, on the Behavioral Health Solutions Panel. He has a lot of interest in this topic. So he's been really driving it. So I mean, this is really good news. The thing we need to talk about, oh, and by the way, the county had previously committed to being the fiscal sponsor of this program, at least as it got underway. Um, and we had allocated $250,000 in this. Okay. Wait, I need my uh staff here. Uh, uh, you guys, were you talking about co-responder or something different?
Something different.
Different. Okay. So we, we had a quick um exchange about this. We had allocated $250,000. Was it in our 2025 budget for a co-responder program? Which we did not spend. And did we allocate part of that to the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan?
We did.
We did. Okay. So um, I think there is an understanding, at least I tried to express, that this is not something that the county, just out of general fund, would probably be funding on a long-term basis. But I was going to talk to you all about whether we could put that 250 into the 2026 budget or roll it over or however that works. We'll need our staff to tell us so that we could fund, that we don't provide the seed money for this program as we had agreed to a few years ago or had decided to. But that kind of expired, so we need to have that conversation again.
Right.
Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't know, when, when would we have that conversation? I mean, I guess I'd be interested to hear from commissioners during budget season or now?
Uh, well, we don't want to make that type of decision today because it's not posted, but um, we could definitely add it to any future meeting agenda and just see where the board lies on allocating that funding or having it put into the 2026 budget, just knowing that it's likely to be a request to use fund balance to do that.
To do, right. Okay.
But that's okay. We've been building up our fund balance for these opportunities.
Okay. So previously we had, we didn't need to go into fund balance to fund this program because we had sufficient revenues. But now, okay. And the fact that we allocated in 2025 doesn't mean it just rolls over. That's
Correct. We have accounted for that not being spent as showing into your existing fund balance.
Okay. So um, we can discuss it at the work, at today's work session, right? Are you prepared to weigh in on it or do you want to, to think about it and agendize it for one of our budget meetings?
I, I think you're going to have your goals discussion and we're going to finalize those goals and then I think that will inform your next discussion about uh allocating funds for addressing this goal.
Perfect. Okay. So we'll do that during our continued retreat. Um, the last thing I want to mention is that the CCI Winter Conference registration is open and that is December 1st through 3rd in Jefferson County, which is Front Range. And I know I'm going. I know Mike's going. Jared, you look like you're going.
Um, I will be going.
Belina, um, Lance?
Don't have plans to attend, but if you need backup, let me know.
I think we'll probably be okay. So should we register as a group? I think we've done that in the past. Um, is that a Carmen?
Please, Carmen.
And Mike, Jared.
And Galena.
And Galena.
Thank you. And that's it?
Hold down the four.
You hold down the board. Exactly. All right. Hopefully the four will not, well, I'm not going to say, hopefully the four will be fine. Um, okay. That's it for me. Um, I believe we are at item number nine, which is our delayed 10 AM adjournment. Is there anything else that I've missed? No? Okay. I'll take a motion.
Do adjourn.
A second.
Oh, how do you vote?
I.
As well, this meeting is adjourned.